The recommendation was looking at reducing the cost of benefits, not necessarily by changing the district's practice of honoring employees by giving benefits to 20 hours' number, but through other methods, being able to job share and looking for opportunities to be able to job share positions so that someone who is working and only needed for 20 hours of food services could perhaps be used in another area for another 10 to 20 hours of work per week. So that way, the cost of benefits on the food services program would be proportionately reduced. The next recommendation, and I'm gonna let my colleague get into this a little bit deeper, but we're looking at the participation in federal programs. And currently, the federal programs that the district is participating in, in offering free breakfast and lunch, is significantly hindering the amount of revenue that's coming in to be able to cover these expenses. And then in the fourth recommendation, that's the high level, but we actually have more details in there. But those are around the operational efficiencies that can be gained to help the program. And my colleague, again, is gonna go into that one then. Next, we just had the introduction, the scope of work. We'll get past that and we'll get straight into the expenditure analysis. So we split this up three different ways. It was expenditures, revenues, and then operation. So those are the three sections. On the expenditure analysis, again, started with the beginning fund balance as defining the issue. Then we got into the audit general's report. On the audit general's report, when you look at cost per meal, the district is doing fairly well. At 3.55, the district is second in the peer group amongst the high school districts. So out of the five, on a cost basis, the district is doing very well in comparison. The other districts that are listed in there that aren't highlighted in yellow are the unified districts. The audit general's report compares the districts to. But again, we're focused more on the five high school districts that are within this peer group. And within those five high school districts, the district is doing fairly well on the expense side. However, wanted to dig deeper than just the auditor general's report. So in the auditor general's report, they have a different purpose. They are trying to figure out what is the reoccurring operational expenses of the program and compare that side by side with the reoccurring operational expenses of other programs. And the reason why that's a different purpose is because the district could have been in a situation where the budget balance was quickly depleted due to a large capital expense. Well, capital expenditures are excluded from auditor general's analysis. They don't look at capital expenditures because they believe that skews what they're after, which is the reoccurring cost of annual expenses. So they exclude the capital expenditures. But for this analysis, we split it up a few different ways to see if perhaps there was some type of large purchase that was made, maybe all the kitchen equipment was replaced, maybe something happened that caused the balance to decline so quickly. So after slicing it a few different ways, after slicing it a few different ways, what we discovered is that no, no matter how we split this up, it keeps coming back to a similar result. The district is performing well overall on the expenses per meal. So when you look at the cost that it takes to produce a meal, whether you're including capital expenditures, whether you're including administration costs, if you're narrowing it to just the food service fund, or if you're looking at the other funds that were used to support out of maintenance and operations and capital, the district kept coming back as performing well on an expense per meal analysis. And so one of those, one of those other examples is included on table 1.3 along with the ranking orders on 1.4 to show that even if we went against without our generals going for their comparison, if we tried another way to look at the numbers, we're still coming up with similar results, but the district is performing well. But we didn't stop there on expenses. We dug deeper. And the next thing we looked at was positions. So even if the overall expenditures are performing well, the next thought was that there be anything isolated within the expenditures that perhaps be improved. So then we looked at the number of positions, we looked at the pay for the positions, and started to analyze those against the comparison groups. And so when we get the table 1.6, you see how your positions rank in comparison to the other four high school districts that the district is being compared against. Obviously, these are completely different geographic locations. You're not competing for the same employees. But if you're looking at terms of expenses and how they fit into the fund, these were the other four that were good to compare to. You can see that on the classified, in terms of, you know, the low tier, the district starts on the higher end, and this is last year's data. So this is, the district starts at 12.74, which was higher than the districts who started the last fiscal year at minimum wage. So you had Tolson and Glendale, or Glendale Union, who had positions that were actually starting at minimum wage. However, when you go through some of the other positions, you can see that, for instance, on the director, the salary for the director is starting lower out of the peer group than the other four districts. So it's kind of a mixed bag where you see on some positions, you're the highest, on some positions, you're the lowest. But overall, it didn't seem as if the structure of the positions was having any type of influence that was causing the situation that we were looking at. On table 1.8, took the total expenditures for all the classified salaries to compare that against some of the other districts and bring that back down to expenditure per meal served when looking at classified salaries and also looking at expenses per average day of membership, just to have another way to look at it. And when we scroll through there, on average day of membership in terms of what you were spending, that was high, and so that brought under concern until we looked at the classified salaries expenditures per meal served in which the district is low and very competitive. So again, the expenses on a per meal served were good. The expenses per ADM were high, and the reason for that is defined in chart 1.1. Your students are eating more. So that's actually a success for the program. Your students, when we look at participation, that's why you're seeing higher cost per ADM, but not necessarily a high cost per meal because your students are eating more meals. And of course, your policies of providing those three meals is probably having a significant influence as well as quality of food to be able to have students show up and eat so many meals. So you're doing well on that measurement when compared to the peer districts. There's actually chart 1.2 was showing that. So you can see Union High School in chart 1.2, all four of the bars, and you're looking at all four years. So they're all the way on the right, your district's all the way on the right. You can see that those bars are a lot higher than any of the other districts. On the opposite end of the spectrum is Tempe Union, where their students are not eating that many meals. But if you look at 2017, out of, there's 180 school days in a year. Your students on average are eating almost 180 meals a year. So almost every student was eating a meal every single day. Obviously, some of those would have kids eating two meals a day, so not having any. But overall, you're doing very well there. Ms. Laura, is there a question?
I have a question. Did you mention that we're serving more meals than other schools?
Yes.
How's that happening? I'm just curious.
If you take, if you take the Tempe Union High School District, Ms. Laura, as the opposite end of the spectrum, working in Kyrene, I know that community very well. I was there for seven years. Students showed up with, I mean, they got shrimp and tuna sandwiches that they brought from home. Like they got, I mean, they got the kosher meals they're walking in with over there. They're not even the school lunch. So it's a different community out there. You know, you have Owatuki that's over there, parts of Chandler, parts of Tempe. That's all in the Tempe Union High School District boundary. The students aren't showing up to eat the meals that they've already brought in their lunch. As opposed to in your community, the students, the students aren't showing up and eating lunch. So you're seeing that, you're seeing that more prevalent here than what you're seeing in the comparison districts. The students are actually eating the meals here as compared to some of the other districts where they're not eating as much. Not that they're not eating at all, I mean, they do have some representation there. But the participation levels are significantly higher here than what participation levels are in comparison districts.
Are any of these schools open campus?
Yes, Ms. Laura. To my knowledge, I believe Tempe Union runs an open campus. You can go, there's Jimmy and Joe's right around the corner, Zips. There's plenty of places within, like two blocks of the school, I believe those students. And it's also gonna depend on the student. I think they let the freshman walk over there, but some of the older grade levels, I believe, are allowed to go ahead and go get their lunch and come back. And then plus parents, you have a lot of stay-at-home moms in that area. The parents show up, they bring, they're bringing the lunch, or they pick up the kids, take the kids to lunch, that happens. I'm in Tolson Union now, completely different community. You know, I'll tell you, over there in Tempe Union, Kyrene, you ask for parent volunteers. You got like 100 just by asking a question. In Tolson, we don't have that. I mean, we're, if we can get one, we're happy. So it's a completely different community, different mindset out there. And so some of that drives impact on participation as well. So on the, on the benefits, and this is the table that we're recovering, the district has a very generous benefits program by offering benefits out to employees who are working 20 hours or more. A lot of the peer districts have been 30 hours or more. When you see that play out in the cost of compensation for the employees within the food service staff, you see that benefits represents a higher percentage in comparison to where the peer districts are in terms of what they're offering for benefits. The next one, don't mind too much, the numbers on the right over there, it's only gonna make sense to Diana. Those are the object code numbers, just taking that benefits pie and slicing it up by all the different expenditure codes within benefits. And object code 6210, which is the big blue Pac-Man that's eating everything, that's for life, health, and accident insurance. So that's, you know, a significant portion of that. 6231, which is the yellow, that's the next biggest one. 6231 is for state retirement, so the contributions that have to be made for state retirement. So those are the two biggest factors in the benefits. And so with that, you have, again, a very nice health package that you're offering for your employees. And when you take a health package, and let's say it's $5,000 or $6,000, when it's a 40-hour employee, that divides up a little nicer than when it's a 20-hour employee. So you can take the exact same health package in two different situations. But once, once you're given that health package for a 20-hour employee, as opposed to a 40-hour employee, you just made the health package twice as expensive. And so then again, that gets to recommendation number two, which was to look at job sharing as a possible way to reduce some of those, those costs of benefits because then it would be split over multiple program areas instead of just the food service program for this, for this particular employee. That was it on the expense analysis. And again, overall, you are very strong on the expenses per meal. No matter, no matter how it got sliced up, you were looking at top two, in some cases, top three. So no matter how many different ways you try to dice the data, you are performing well on an expense per meal analysis when compared to the peer group. It's not gonna be the case as we go through revenues. So on the revenue analysis, we started off with, again, similar approach of looking at revenues per meal served. And so when we look at revenues per meal served, the district is actually ranking last. So despite those revenues going up over the last few years, the district is now last in the peer group. At Tempe Union, you see that $4.14 per meal served in terms of the revenues that they're taking in, whereas the district is at $3.09 per meal.
May I ask?
Yes.
Sure. So the other districts that we're in comparison, are they 100% revenues?
No.
So wouldn't it stand to reason that they're getting revenue from mom and dad compared to?
Yes. Yes, when we go through that, that is exactly it is. Because they're charging for the meals, and even when you charge for meals, you still do get some paid reimbursement. But because they're charging for the meals and because they have control over how much to charge for the meals, that's why their revenues are not only higher, but when they're in a similar situation, they can make adjustments to their price for the meal, and that would instantly kick up their revenues to try to help with this type of situation. So the district being on the federal programs for allowing for all the free meals is somewhat hindering the ability to try to increase revenue, it really limits the opportunity. We go through a few different opportunities, but that's the main driver that is limiting the ability to increase revenue. When we look at just local food sales, on local food sales, you can see that looking at just object code 1600 per meal served, again, the district is ranking in at the bottom in terms of those revenues. When we look at local food sales as a percent of the total revenue coming in for the food service program, you can see that the district is at the bottom in terms of that revenue. That's very limited on what the district is actually bringing in through local food sales because the district is mostly getting those federal reimbursements for the meals with the federal programs that the district is participating in. So the federal reimbursements are not counted in this particular graph. That's, that's a separate object code for us. But this is just looking at money that's being generated by those local food sales. And so you can see for Tempe Union, it's the opposite effect because there are not a lot of free and reduced lunch in Tempe Union. Most of the money that's coming into that program, over 60%, is mom and dad sending the money in with the students to be able to pay for the meal. So that's where most of their money is coming from in Tempe Union. So that would be, again, a completely different community, but that's with the opposite end of the spectrum. So for this recommendation, and I'm actually gonna let my colleague go into this further because again, with her 30 years' experience in food service, she knows all about these programs and that. So she'll go into them in significantly more detail. But we're asking for, we're bringing forward a recommendation to evaluate the continued participation in these federal programs and look at other federal programs as possibilities in order to address the concerns on the revenue side. And with that, I will turn it over to Donna Campbell. Donna, can you hear us fine and see the slides fine?
I can hear you. I can't see the slide, but I have coffee, so I'm good to go.
All right, you just tell me when to scroll and I'll scroll for them. I'm right on your first page.
Okay, great, thank you. Good afternoon, governing board. My position was to look at the operational efficiency of the program. And so I have a variety of recommendations about the program and their operation. For the first one, utilize the financial analysis tool to determine if the district should continue to be on the special assistance program for breakfast and lunch at Sebola, Hila Ridge, and Coppa High Schools, where currently there is no charge to students. If the district chooses to remain on the program, a base share should be reestablished by collecting meal applications to determine the free and reduced percentages and therefore revenue. For the continuance of the special assistance program that you're currently on, all meals for free, no charge, to be eligible, LEAs or schools must agree to cover with non-federal funds any cost of providing free meals to all students above the amounts provided in the special or the federal assistance. We reviewed this information last year. Currently, the USDA has approved the waivers for an additional school year. So what we had anticipated was having Ms. Pruitt go back to online meal applications for the 21-22 school year as part of the school registration process. We would utilize the district's IT department for laptop availability, allowing parents to come into the cafeteria or somewhere close in proximity to complete a new meal application as early as 30 days prior to the start of school. You could market that program, the meal application, on the website and instructions by sending families either postcards or emails and a link to the district's website. Then you could have laptops available prior to school and for the first three weeks of schools to give parents the opportunity to fill out meal applications. There are some parents who maybe do not have technology in their home. So by having those laptops in the school, when they drop off their students, they would be able to come in and complete a meal application very easily. We would recommend that they utilize the CEP monthly federal reimbursement estimator calculator to estimate the level of federal reimbursement to ensure that you're reaching a break-even point and not losing money at the three campuses, San Luis, Vista, and Yuma High Schools. For the continuance of the program, again, to be eligible, the LEA must agree to cover with non-federal funds any cost of providing free meals to all students above the amount provided for the federal assistance. The annual PLE tool is a paid lunch equity tool, and that should be utilized and increased by a minimum of five cents each year for a paid student breakfast and lunch pricing to catch up on the state requirements. This would only be applicable if you change over into a pricing program. We would also want Ms. Pruitt to utilize the adult lunch pricing tool just to ensure that the fees that you're charging for adults covers the cost of the entire meal, which includes the labor that it takes to prepare that meal. So food costs, everything involved in that pricing. Another item which we can do right now because of this waiver that we're in due to COVID is to consider serving dinner meals to the community under the AT-RIS program to increase revenue through the federal reimbursement. There's a lot of possibilities on that for offering meal bundling up to seven breakfasts, lunches, snacks, and suppers through the current USDA waivers that they have. Now, when we did this, it was through September 30th of 2021, but my understanding now is it will be through June 30th of '22. So Ms. Pruitt would still have that opportunity and could go on that at any time. For staffing recommendations, the school managerial positions and district office staff are typically full-time positions. However, the district currently has a number of other full-time positions at each of the school sites. The district could increase from two lunch periods to three lunch periods in order to more effectively utilize staff who are six or more hours per day. The district could then use that efficiency to continue to reduce the number of employees through attrition. The number of hours assigned for site-based staff should be reviewed to ensure they're in line with the needs of your program. This recommendation should be used in conjunction with the recommendation number two to reduce the cost of benefits that Jeremy went ahead and explained earlier in the program. For the daily operation recommendations, the observation was the student lines and the wait time were very lengthy, which has a tendency to have students leave and want to go do something else or not eat for the day. I, when speaking with Ms. Pruitt, I know prior to some of the COVID-related items, she had purchased equipment and was planning on introducing some new programs there and all-of-part kiosks. And so one of the recommendations was to purchase equipment, if she doesn't already have it, to support additional kiosks. The shorter our staff would help with this endeavor. All suggestions that are listed below also have the potential to increase the department's revenue, such as adding an additional grab-and-go snack line to increase student participation revenue. So it might not be the full breakfast or the full lunch. They just want a little quick grab-and-go something just to go ahead and put it in their backpack and go into the classroom. During breakfast, add a grab-and-go kiosk. It also sells just little all-of-part beverages, little snacks. Maybe they don't want that reimbursable meal. The snack line, I apologize, up above on that previous statement, the grab-and-go snack line would just be some additional like hot items like hamburger, pizza, those kinds of things that are just maybe more driven to the kids' specific likes. Another one would be to add a third lunch serving time so that there aren't quite so many students waiting in line, waiting to eat and get something at their favorite station. They could place additional hot food grab-and-go kiosks in the courtyards. Again, this is all about students not having to wait in line. They're, they want to go sit with their friends. And so anything that you can do to offer additional areas so the wait time is not so long and have the student favorites. We could reduce food costs. This is one thing we did observe. There is a milk cooler that is typically, has been at the back of the serving line. And so by placing the milk cooler in the front of the serving line, if the student receives their milk first as they're going through the line, they would have the option, if she's offer versus serve, to maybe not select one of the higher food cost items. It's also would eliminate theft. As kids are coming through the line, they're grabbing a milk, they're grabbing, and no one's supervising it so that the milk is just kind of walking off more than one. We would want to have them review their menu cycle items to ensure that only the required items are on the plate and also only the minimum portion sizes are used to prevent those unnecessary food costs. Review participation numbers for menu items and switch out those low participation days. And want to introduce new items to keep the menu fresh. It's not the same thing, you know, day in, day out. There's a lot of variety that she can choose from. Different marketing recommendations. What I would suggest is consider establishing a student advisory council to achieve student input on the menu and different all-of-part offerings. This could be done at the district office with representatives from each school if it's too difficult for them to meet at all, each individual location. Another item would be consider a student culinary program or a recipe contest. You could feature the student chef creations on the menu as well. If the kids like that, buy in it. They know that other people, other students have created that menu. They like to see those new items like that. You could also hold an annual food festival of the new menu options for the upcoming year. You could invite parents to also attend that. Another thing to increase revenue, increase student participation is to purchase age-appropriate items for monthly giveaways. It could be, you know, basketball, soccer balls, jump ropes. It could be anything, backpacks, water bottles, just something as a monthly giveaway to have students get into the cafeteria to eat. So you'd want to establish those guidelines of the students eating in the program to be eligible to win so that ideally, you're increasing your participation and they're consuming the meal. And then also using social media platform. I think we all know that social media is where it's at. So if there's a way that you can advertise new menu items, you know, come and eat with us for breakfast and lunch, some kind of a direct student parent notification such as school messenger just to advertise when new monthly menu options are also placed on the menu. And for the financial recommendations, I know that revenue and expenditure budget is getting to, from the business office to food services, but maybe a review with them so they understand how to read the budget and that they're preparing a profit and loss statement to monitor their financial standing. That really needs to be done on a monthly basis to, so that she can change the trajectory of the program if her meals are too high in cost or she's not getting the revenue that she's wanting for. She can make different adjustments if she can see on a monthly basis where her budget is at at any given time. For catering, in reviewing that, the food prices are very, very low. I'm relatively positive they are not covering the cost that is being asked for. So food prices, they need to be increased a minimum of 50% from the food bid cost. So when she goes out for a bid and she has a certain price for a croissant or some kind of catering, if she's charging, if it's 20 cents, she needs to increase that by 50% so that when she is billing out, she is getting those costs covered. The staff labor, including the employee benefits to prepare and serve the meals, has got to be included in that price so that she's covering all of the costs. She could also increase the cost of the all-of-part food items. There's a lot of wiggle room from where she's at to where she could go. Also requesting DoD funds from ADE. So there's different ways that we can get commodities, and she is getting some. But sometimes there is surplus, and so there's a way that she can call the State Department and see if there's anything available, which will help reduce her food costs as well. And then ensuring that the commodities that she is receiving aren't being utilized on the menus and she adjusts the menus accordingly throughout the year to minimize that there aren't any commodities left over or very little. And commodities are a wonderful way to help also reduce costs as well. Those are my recommendations.
So with that, we can open it up for questions, Ms. President. We're going to pay now. Check. Of course.
I know, I have lots of time.
I know, I have lots of questions. It appeared to me and listening to this presentation that the two of you were speaking almost against each other. On the one hand, it seems like we're serving more meals than any other school district that we're compared to. And on the other hand, you're trying, I apologize, Linda is saying. I apologize, is saying that maybe we need to increase the amount of time that we serve lunches to get more people in. I'm very confused by all of that. On top of the fact that we are offering free reduced lunch because of a income thing, correct? So if we have, I mean, we have a population, as you said, that's so unique. We want to feed our children. And I'm personally really proud of the job that Ms. Pruitt's doing and the job that our district is doing. In giving those options to our students. I don't understand how a lot of these suggestions will help us continue doing that.
Yes, Ms. President, and Ms. President, I'd like to clarify on a couple of those items. So the recommendation to do three serving times was to make better use of the staff. So let's say if at the three serving times. You have X number of staff members who are right now covering two serving times. But once you go to three serving times and you split out that population. You're not really changing your overall cost because those staff right now are on contracts for six hours, five, six hours of work. So you're not, you're not increasing a lot of their hourly rate. The benefits cost is still the same because you're still paying for their medical, you're still paying for all these benefits. And so by going to three hours now, maybe instead of needing, let's say, just to throw numbers out there. Instead of needing 10 staff outside to be able to serve that same number of meals, you would only need seven staff members. So they'll be working longer days. And because they're working longer days, that percentage of the compensation that's going towards benefits would be reduced. The longer their days are linked out. So that was a recommendation around looking at three serving times in order to reduce those costs. Additionally, the idea that the student lines would be shortened and then you could serve even more meals. Yes, you are, you are doing better already than everybody else in the peer group. But when you're looking at how do we get in more revenue to offset some of these costs. With you being on the federal program, it really comes down to, is there a way to serve more meals? And so that's why one of the suggestions was, especially right now under the COVID rules. Could you serve breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snacks? Because your man-hours, which is the primary cost, is probably not going to increase all that much. Because the benefits again was already covered. If you're taking a five-hour day employee, you're telling them, hey, you've worked six hours. An extra hour, you might be able to bring in a lot more revenue by offering those full meals for the whole day. And still taking care of your community, taking care of them even better if you're offering all three meals of the day. And serving out all those meals and then by being able to submit all those meals for federal reimbursement. Getting in more revenues that way. So the approaches were not so much a all or nothing, like do all of these approaches or do none of these approaches. They were layered approaches. One of the things that Mrs. Campbell first touched on had to do with re-establishing the baseline. So right now, your federal reimbursements are based on what your free reduced lunch population was once upon a time. It's not based on what it is right now. You reestablish that baseline if there's more poverty here, if the baseline can be improved, which. I wanted to quote it, Don, I remember the number, I think you guys are like around 67%, but you're believing it's probably closer to 100% and qualify. If that baseline number could just move, if it would just move up, your federal reimbursements would increase significantly. And that stays in place until you reestablish a new baseline. And so that's why she had a suggestion of if you are going to stay on these programs. Then you would at least want to look at, can you get parents to fill out these apps? So you could reestablish a baseline that's higher than your existing baseline. And be able to get an additional federal reimbursement by able to reestablish that baseline.
Some of these apps that we're discussing are similar to what we used to do, those applications. So I understand all of these options, I really do. How do we, Mrs. Thompson, discuss them specific to our district and our needs? And what maybe would work for us? I don't think in the master schedule, we're having a third lunch is feasible.
Oh, we've done that at certain campuses in the past. It's definitely not an educational choice because for us it'd be breaking up certain kids during certain periods. As we all know those arguments. So I don't, I think what I really appreciate is there are, there are things that we can choose from. Which is why we wanted to make sure that the board understood all of the options and the different layers that we could look at. That would be appropriate for us. This is our second time through, so have a little bit better understanding. Also with that baseline, it may come up that it's lower and we aren't a free lunch or breakfast program anymore. You know, it just depends on what those applications look like. So a lot of what we're trying to have them to look at will depend on the application process and what those numbers show. But one thing that we do know is we can't continue to operate the way that we are now. So as we look at those options, how can we continue to serve most students in the best way possible? But also reduce the cost too. We're not looking at profit, we're looking at break and even and not running the road, which is what we've been doing for several years now. So there's not an easy answer and these are all options and choices. Learn new things throughout this process, which we really appreciate. And that's the importance of having this study.
And to add, it's different times since I'm around the three lunch times. In Tulsa, we've moved to three lunch times now. It is difficult because we have a split period. So we have students who for one of their periods, they actually go to class for half the class. They go eat lunch and then they come back for the second half of the half class. And that's only one of it, that's only if you're on that one particular lunch period. The other two lunch periods don't have that issue. So I guess the three lunch periods is difficult. But if you're, if you're looking at financially, would it make sense? Financially, yes, it makes sense. Everything that we're presenting, we know you have to bring back into the context of, does it make sense? For the district's overall goals and everything that they're trying to accomplish, not just balancing out food service. And that's why we get layered approaches, depending on where the board's comfort is with these different approaches. How many of them can you adopt to, if you can become self-sufficient with the program? At least lessen the impact that it's having on MNO by having to pull MNO over here to cover what food service programs in the red.
Good question, so MNO is covered for where we're short.
As well as other funds right now.
Is there a way here, Ms. Pruitt's idea?
I was going to ask Ms. Pruitt, I don't know how long you had this report, whether you've been able to look at it and. Come up with your own idea.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Sorry. Just before, I had a couple. So you know where we see some contrast here, not contrast, I guess, different parts of the recommendations and the layering. So to understand that it's increasing not only, or changing that baseline. But also looking at how we can increase revenue for those that then can purchase through the kiosks. That will be added revenue coming in. That would balance that out. Okay, yeah, that makes sense. And the other question that I had in regards to benefits packages. In relation to other districts, rural districts like ourselves. Do you find that there is a difference in those benefit packages because of recruitment and retention to those areas?
Yes, Ms. Fallon, you weren't compared to rural districts only because within your peer group. The other high school districts that are identified within your peer group happen to be urban districts. So, and they're all in Maricopa. So it doesn't give her the perfect analysis. So obviously we don't have a nice little control group where it could be another high school district in Yuma. That we'd be able to compare you to. The peer group that was identified is the best that's on record right now. We use the far comparison, not generally uses it for their comparison. But we realize obviously things that happen in Yuma are different than Maricopa. It's different demographics.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pruitt?
Okay, I have had this report for, I would say a couple of months now probably, since it was released to us. And so I have had time to review it and go through the information. A lot of the recommendations that Ms. Campbell put together, we were already working towards. And we have implemented for this school year. Things like adding all-of-part sales at breakfast. We now have what most students call snack car sales. We have those at breakfast now, we've never had that in the past. So that's increasing revenue a little bit. And we've added additional snack car sale lines, all-of-part lines during lunch service. That helps increase revenue. We have also added additional ramble versatile meal lines where students can grab their lunch and breakfast. Outside of the cafeteria. So that was a really big change for lunch service. We've never had a service outside other than COVID, outside of the cafeteria. So now students, that has reduced our wait time in the line. I have already done a review at all campuses and I have noted that impact that it's had. The students are getting through the lines quicker inside the cafeteria than they have the option outside. So they don't have to go stand in the line with seven kids inside, they can stand in the line with 100 kids outside. And so that has helped us increase our numbers a little bit by having those cards out. And again, reduce the wait times for inside the cafeteria. So we have implemented many of these different recommendations that were put forth in this report. I would say probably one of the largest ones, Ms. Pravitz, that you're asking several questions toward is our special provision programs. And where are we currently at with our schools, how we got there and moving forward, what is best for our district. And so as you know, we've talked about it in the past, all six of our campuses participate in special provision programs. We have three campuses. Hilo Ridge High School, Sebola High School, and Kopa High School are on provision two. And our other campuses, Yuma, San Luis, and Vista are on CEP, the Community Eligibility Provision. In this recommendation, it is recommended to look at moving our three provision two schools away from that. And put them back on pre-reduced and paid. The reason for that being is when they qualified to be on a special provision program, their percentages were very low. So in order to be eligible to even apply for a special provision program. You have to have 50% or more of your students who fill out the household application be qualified as a free student. That's a pretty big number to hit at schools that have higher income level. So for example, Hilo Ridge High School is our lowest percentage school. They barely made the mark and qualified at 56.11%. So they barely qualified to be on a special provision program. And it took a lot of work back then, that was in 1718 was their base year to get them onto the program. A lot of effort, not only from the campus, but the student nutrition department to get in those household applications. Because you have to get in enough applications in order to certify enough to get to that 50% marker. Our other campuses, Sebola was at 64.44, they qualified in 1617. And Kopa was at 71.52. Overall, those are pretty low percentages, even at 70%. Most of the campuses that were in this study that we were compared to, as well as other schools within the state. They don't even consider putting a school on a special provision unless they hit a 90% or higher marker of free students in that category. So we put our students into that category with very, very low percentages. And that's why we saw the decrease in our revenues. Because when you have a school, for example, Hilo Ridge, again, qualifying at 56%. Those reimbursement rates from the federal government by making all meals free for a free student. We are getting, this is this year's numbers, $3.00 for a free student, $3.75. For a paid student, we are getting 44 cents back. Those percentages, again, were all established from years ago. And those percentages carry over with us every single year. And so 44 cents isn't a lot to get back for those remaining outside of the 56.11%. Those paid students that qualified in that year, that's not a lot of money to get back, 44 cents. Whereas if we were on free, reduced, and paid and we were not on a special provision. We could be charging, for example, $3.50 to a paid student or $4. Ms. Campbell mentioned the tool that we use to calculate what we would actually charge a student when we're on a paid program. So for example, we charge a student $3.50. Not only do we get that $3.50 back from mom and dad who are paying for it. But we also in addition, get federal reimbursement for that student. So we get $3.50 plus 44 cents. So now we're making $3.94 instead of 44 cents for every paid student. Hopefully that makes sense in those numbers. So that's why the recommendation is to look at those schools that have the lower percentages. Considering moving them back to pre-reduced and paid and just adjusting those revenues of. We can make more based on past numbers as long as the participation stays. We can make more in having those higher paid columns and charging for meals in addition to the reimbursement monies that we get back. And then re-establishing the base year for that. Kopa High School is our oldest school in provision two, currently on provision two. Their percentages were established in 2010, 2011. So that's where when Ms. Campbell says we might want to look at doing another base year to see if we can get that percentage higher. Than in the 70th percentile. Those students are long and gone from our district, they haven't been here anymore. So the students at Kopa High School may have a higher need than they did back then in 2010, 2011. So if we did a base year where we collect household applications, we would have to notify the state that we are pulling ourselves off of a provision. Which means if we don't qualify, we have to be on pre-reduced and paid. We don't get the option to say, oh wait, no, we want 100% and we want to stay with that one. We've already told them we're pulling ourselves off. So we can tell them that we're doing that to, in order to re-establish a base year. And then based on what that percentage is, we can make the decision at that time to either go with that new percentage. And remain on a special provision with the higher percentage, if it is higher. Or say it was not higher and we would are going to be on pre-reduced and paid. So that's about looking at re-establishing those base year numbers with our current student group. To see if we can get them at all, if at all higher, if possible. Is that your preference?
Let me refer you to Ms. Pravitz's question. Okay, so this is sort of study session, work session. So we're going to take this information, we're going to probably have some more questions here. But you're going to take this information with the administrative team. And what's the timeframe that you're going to take to do all this work and then come back to us with a recommendation?
That is a very good question. So our timetable that we have, we have deadlines that we have to make to the state to notify them. What we are going to be participating in for the following year. And so that is in spring that we are going to be notifying them for next school year. If we are going to continue on our special provisions or not. We already did that for the year, sorry. So we already did that for this year, that we were going to be remaining on the special provision. So that would be in the spring, typically around January, February. When we notify them, there's two different times that we have to notify them. The initial packet and then the final packet that we are officially staying with our percentages where we're at. Which is later in the spring, around April, when we do that final packet to notify them.
And to answer further, tonight's a study session. We'll have different opportunities, we'll continue to bring more data from our own studies as far as what's currently happening. But my goal is to bring it to the board no later than November for either action or information.
So with the information, what we do know, and I already put together a presentation for superintendent's cabinet. And we, my department worked very hard to put together those numbers of several years worth of data of participation. Where these schools specifically, the three that we would consider pulling off of provision two. What their participation was back when they were put on to the special provision. So we do know if we make this decision, participation is going to drop. And it will very likely significantly drop in the first couple of years. So we anticipate it going down, but then coming back up. As students adjust to no longer being free, everybody being free. So there's going to be a little period that we are going to have to wait for those numbers to start climbing again. And for that kind of cycle of being on special provisions and free kind of leaves with that group of students. So we do anticipate that. Participation was lower back before moving all students to free. You can see that in the numbers and the participation with each campus that their numbers did start to increase. that their numbers did start to increase every year following being added to that provision. Obviously, they're getting the meals for free, of course, the numbers are going to go up. So we do anticipate the numbers going down. We hope that it still brings in the revenue. We know the revenue numbers are there. Charging the students in addition to the federal reimbursements, that will help us financially. But you have to look at the financial versus the impact to the students of that participation is going to drop. We obviously don't want it to drop, but we know that it will very likely happen based on the numbers. And then based on the packet that they gave, I believe it's in page three, table 1.1, when you look at the beginning fund balances just for us in the Yuma category, when you see that significant drop from 2017 to 2018, that's what happened when we added Hilo Ridge to special provision programs. So you can see that and I provided the data to our superintendent's cabinet. When we put each one of these schools on a special provision, what it did to our fund balance every time when we moved one of those schools that was higher in the paid category and not in the free category, what it did, it did decrease our overall revenues because we were only relying on federal reimbursement dollars. We were not relying on charging households in the free, reduced, and paid categories.
So just to reiterate, so each school individually be decided at what rating or what participation they were given?
Yes, it is by school, it is not by district. So we would, you can pull, we could pull them all off at once, you could do it one at a time, but it is by individual school basis. So if we chose to pull all three schools off of provision two and go back to pre-reduced and paid, or at least attempt to reestablish a base year with a higher percentage to re-qualify for a special provision, it would be by a school basis. So we would have to do household applications at each individual school. And the free, reduced, paid percentages are solely based on those schools enrolled students. It's not by our district as a whole.
If my mind serves me correctly, one of the reasons that we went to complete free and reduced at the time was peer pressure. Is that not correct? What, what can we anticipate looking at?
I could make a comment, I've just been here longer, I truly know. From, from a campus perspective, I, it, my memory is that we just felt that we had so many students that weren't eating and weren't able to participate. And so the drive was to get the applications in. I was at a campus, so the, the feeling we had was just get, get as many people to participate in applications. I have to share with the.
Well, I think you can be proud of the, the participation level. Obviously, the quality of the food must be good and the, the cost per meal is exceptional. So you've done everything you can do without changing the guidelines, I suppose. I don't, Ms. Pravitz has some more questions.
I have just one, which is how, how does the migrant population that we serve in Yuma get taken into account in all of these numbers?
Within our numbers, they are not specifically in our numbers. Obviously, typically those students that are in migrant programs, that they do qualify in the free category. But again, we haven't done household applications in many, many years. I haven't even been a part of the process myself, I, I came on, we were all special provision. But filling out those household applications, my understanding is in the past, those students have qualified in the free category.
And the applications are filled out upon coming into the district? It's, it's not, it is a cutoff date, August 10th or whatever, whenever you register, then that's part of your packet?
Yes, and so, yeah, it's part of registration. It's typically when we do that, we can start collecting household applications in July. It's usually not quite July 1 because the state updates the application every year. So we have to wait for that to be released to us. So it's usually in the first or second week of July. But we can start collecting those as part of the registration process and it can continue even after the student is enrolled. And we can accept household applications after school begins and continue to certify them.
You have a question?
No, no, I think, I think the only thing that's, that's good is it would be in a school by its own basis, they're all different.
Yes, they are.
The president announced that if I made it, it's, it's, the world changes rapidly and our community changes. And it's, are the responsible thing to do to reevaluate each time true of current data. And that includes the application process. So in my personal opinion as a superintendent, I believe it's, it's time to redo those applications.
I would agree that it is time to reevaluate. We want what's best for our students. But looking at the numbers, we also, obviously, as a department, cannot continue to operate into the red and impact our MNO budget, which further impacts our students and what we can provide to our campuses. So I agree, Ms. Thompson, we do need to reevaluate and, and look at where we're at to provide the best, very best for our students.
I just really appreciate the presentation. I felt it was a lot of insight. It was easy digest, to digest about that, but I thought it was well presented and interested to see a comparison. But also I like the layering options that you gave, I thought that was really nice. And then some of the creative ideas were also encouraging, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma.
Any other questions? Very good presentation, I appreciate it.
And thank you for coming to Yuma present, even though there's no football game for you to watch.
That's all right, the Cardinals will be back playing in a minute.
We do appreciate you, your expertise, love you, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there an motion to adjourn the study session?
No.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Pravitz, second by Ms. Mellon to adjourn the study session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.